This conference will now be recorded.
She's, I see that she's joined us, but I don't see her, but I think that she's with us here. So we'll go ahead and get started. Work session is an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. And that will be immediately following this work session at 6 o'clock. We'll start with the board communications, Commissioner Thompson. Stop. Commissioner Thompson's frozen. We'll go ahead and, and circle back around. Let's start with Commissioner Bangs.
Um, really no, no, nothing to report and anything that I have, I'll have during the regular meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Commissioner Thompson, we couldn't hear you and you were frozen there for a while, so.
Is this, is this my clue that I should just nod and smile during tonight's meeting? You know, that just may be the best option. Um, thank you. Happy to be here.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Toyoka.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Just, I have other reports for the regular session, but for the work session, just want to say, you know, Clatsop County Fair to encourage everyone to attend. It's a great way to highlight all of the good things of Clatsop County and when support the youth in the same token. So as much as we can, you know, advertise, get people out and enjoy the fair.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Webb?
Yes, I have nothing. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. And I don't as well. Just welcome everybody. We'll go ahead and discuss the formal agenda now. Does anybody have any questions about the formal agenda? Okay. Seeing none, uh, we will take this opportunity to get a public health update. Our public health director, Margot Lolick, is here and I will turn it over to her.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, I thought this would be a good time to give you a brief bulleted update on what's going on as you're all receiving a lot of information, I'm sure from many different sources. I'm certainly receiving calls and we're busy in public health, as I know our healthcare partners are as well. So we're having increased cases and while that may seem alarming, um, no one should actually be surprised. When January 30th rolled around and the guidance changed and Oregon opened up, we would expect to see an increase in cases because people are circulating more, camps are reconvening, trainings are coming together in person and people are traveling from other states. As well as Oregonians, Clatsop County residents are traveling to other places as well. And so we were prepared for this, um, and also aware that there are many variant strains of the virus. And learning, which we learn over time, that, um, uh, the Delta variant is highly transmissible, about four times more transmissible than, um, the other variants. But the vaccine is still protective, not 100% preventative from getting COVID, but it does prevent, um, serious illness and death. And so, yes, a lot more cases. And again, we are seeing more cases because, uh, individuals are concerned that they may have COVID. They have been exposed to COVID, but more concerned about whether or not, um, they have contracted the virus because of the, the Delta variant. When they get their results, they do not get this information. In fact, we only know, um, the number of cases regionally, um, not specifically for Clatsop County. What we're looking at, and we've started reporting two or three weeks ago, is, um, the number of cases that we receive, those case reports we receive every day that are vaccinated, unvaccinated, or in the progress of being vaccinated. We want to mirror how the state is reporting this data on their dashboards, so it makes more sense to the consumer. But also that's actually the most important information is whether or not individuals who are primarily testing positive are vaccinated. And our data mirrors what we're seeing in the state as well as federally, that more than 90% of individuals in our county who are currently contracting the virus are not vaccinated. We took the measures a week ago, maybe a little bit prior to that. I requested staff, when we receive those positive case reports, that while we're processing them, we also take that extra step and we call that individual. And we acknowledge that they're positive. They already know their results unless we're the ones doing the testing. And we offer them the opportunity to get vaccinated. While they're positive, there's a waiting period, that isolation waiting period. But we're happy to schedule them for an appointment or refer them and get the connected to, um, a resource in the community where they can get vaccinated. What our experience has been is that many who are testing positive still do not want to get vaccinated. And also, why would I get vaccinated? I'm positive. So there's an education component. The message hasn't changed. It's not going to change. But we are making that very important, important, um, contact with that positive case and saying, hey, we're here to support you. We will get you vaccinated. So I think that's, that's a change in strategy and we're implementing that is that up until recently, there's been testing and there's been vaccination, when in fact they're highly interdependent. And so as we move forward, uh, we are going to be integrating the two at the county level. And so we are actually going to be co-locating some of those operations. We're still doing our outreach, our targeted outreach for vaccinations. But hopefully by next week, we will, um, we're working on, uh, locating at a couple of different sites. And we will be integrating the two. So if someone is going to get a test and it's negative, without much effort, they can go easily get vaccinated as well. I don't expect it to have a dramatic effect overnight because of the convenience. But we have a commitment, we've made a commitment that we will meet people where they work, live and play. And that is another strategy to, to do so. So we'll continue reporting that data every week. Let's see, in terms of the masking, right, and the guidance, we're recommending that individuals, whether vaccinated or unvaccinated, continue to mask. It's not a requirement, but it's a recommendation. And while we really embrace the freedom of not wearing masks, I personally have continued to wear a mask when I go into public settings, the grocery store or wherever, because I know we're still learning a lot about the vaccine, the duration of efficacy. And, um, because we're learning more about that and because we have this virulent strain of the Delta variant, it makes sense that as we're learning more, we continue to protect ourselves, we continue to protect others in the process. And I want to just take this opportunity and then I will, um, be quiet and answer your questions, um, that some of this resistance to masking is, is, yes, it's a irritating barrier. Um, and it's nice to have that connection face to face. And yet in so many ways, we have barriers that are implemented every day that we don't even think about to minimize, mitigate, or completely stop any risk of spread of any kind of infection or pathogen. And some very common ways we do that is, for example, when you go and you go to a deli, you go to a restaurant and you order food, you'll see individuals wearing gloves. That was implemented about 12 years ago in Oregon. The reason individuals working in food service wear gloves is to protect the public and minimize any risk or spread of any type of infectious agent. It was also a response to the transmission of norovirus, right? So we see that as normal. People wear gloves. If they're not wearing gloves and they're making our food, we're a little bit concerned about that, right? We all know about bloodborne pathogens, right? There's a reason we mask, we hand wash, we do trainings at the work site, we do trainings in schools. We do trainings in any healthcare setting, right? And we do that because we assume everyone may be infectious with something, whether it's in their saliva, their blood. And so we mask, we wear gloves because we want to protect ourselves and we want to protect others. Masking is no different. It's the same concept. It's the same practice. It may be inconvenient. It may be uncomfortable, but it's there for the same reason that those working in food preparation are wearing gloves. And so, um, and I could give you many other examples, which you don't need at this moment, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And just to let you know, we're at about 66% vaccination rate in the county. And yes, we have quite a few thousand more to vaccinate. Uh, we may not get to the 80% goal at this point. But we are having individuals scheduled for first doses every single day in our clinic. And I'm sure they are elsewhere, um, which is very encouraging news. And we are all doing a lot of testing at, um, the hospitals, the urgent cares and in public health. So it's great. We can do the testing, but it's equally as important that we get individuals vaccinated. So that's it for me and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Margot. I really appreciate that illustration and working in a healthcare setting myself and seeing all of the hard work of our public health director and the public health department over the last, you know, 18, 19 months. It, it really is hard for me to grasp and understand the resistance to vaccines and to masking that we see and how it's become a political issue is beyond me, but I, I really do take that message to heart. I hope the rest of our community does as well. We're making it as easy as possible for folks to get signed up to get vaccinated. So I hope that people, uh, take this opportunity and, and use this as a wake-up call that it's, that it's very necessary and, uh, that folks need to do it. Um, I saw Commissioner Toyoka had his hand up. Commissioner Toyoka.
Yes, uh, thank you, Margot, for that briefing. It's really great. I did have a question on, uh, testing. So, um, we have another business in Washington and one of our employees, you know, felt ill, went in, got tested, positive COVID test. Uh, doctor said, well, try this other test. It discriminates between influenza and COVID. Got a second test, it was influenza. So my question, I guess, is, you know, in this whole sphere, I mean, there's probably a great possibility a lot of influenza cases came up positive as COVID previously. But is there gonna, are they gonna expand this testing so we can know that, okay, that was the flu and not COVID? Or since we've got these advanced tests now, and is there any matrix that would, that kind of point to that? So I know I read some CDC things and they said, yes, there's a new testing and we could discriminate.
Yeah, that's a really good question. And in fact, um, two ways to answer that. I would expect that there's going to be more specific differential guidance, just like we have that in terms of interpreting, interpreting the different types of COVID tests as we start moving into the fall and flu season. I also know for us here at the health department, uh, we use the, the Abbott testing equipment. We have separate equipment for influenza and then we have a separate testing equipment for COVID. How that will get integrated and the ability to do singular testing locally, for example, at the health department versus sending it to a lab. There are rapid flu tests, of course, um, as well. So I just made a note of that and, um, I will actually take that question forward. Um, we have two weekly calls with the Oregon Health Authority. Dr. Seidlinger, Dr. Paul C. Slack and others, um, from OHA are on that call and I'll, I'll bring that question forth. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
I see Commissioner Bangs first and then Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Bangs?
Uh, just one question and it's in regards to, have you had any clear news regarding a booster shot in the future or in the foreseeable future?
So, um, what I'm reading and hearing about booster is that if we see anything, it will likely be probably very late fall, early winter. It's my assessment and, um, thinking that the prioritization right now is going to be getting, um, emergency use, also emergency use authorization for the 12 and younger population because of the strong, um, commitment and desire to open up schools and get kids back in school and to be able to keep, um, students and staff healthy and well. Uh, so I'm thinking based upon my own reading, I, I wouldn't be surprised if that's a higher priority than the booster. But I know it's coming for both Pfizer and I think Moderna. So as I get more specific information on that, I'll definitely pass it along.
And to follow up, um, because we have so many different variations of vaccine, would it matter if somebody say went and got a Johnson and Johnson after having a Moderna? Or would, do we even know right now?
We don't know.
Concern.
Yeah, we don't know. What we know is we can't mix the doses when you're getting a two-dose vaccine. So you can't get a Pfizer and then a second dose of Johnson and Johnson, or excuse me, Moderna. But we, we don't know that information yet. I'm sure it will come out in FAQs.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. So much risk and so many unknowns. I, I mean, this is really sort of nerve wracking. I appreciate your giving us clear, calm, specific information. You know, my, um, personal experience is I'm going to put my mask back on inside because from what I can tell, that's the best way to protect myself and other people. But that leads me to wonder, we had talked about resuming our in-person meetings. I don't know that I feel safe doing that. And I don't want to make anybody uncomfortable, but, but I'm curious about that because, because I do want to take care of myself, I do want to take care of other community members. Do you have any thoughts on in-person meetings and how to handle those?
Well, my recommendation at this point in time would be that if in-person meetings were resumed, masking should be a requirement. We don't know who is vaccinated and unvaccinated. And I think it's the most egalitarian equitable way, um, to protect everyone, both the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. So I would recommend in resuming and we can make masks available to those who don't have masks.
Thank you. And a, and a follow-up question, because even if people are vaccinated, there are these breakthrough infections. So I may not be effectively vaccinated. Even if I'm vaccinated, I'm willing to undergo the inconvenience of wearing a mask in order to take care of myself and other people. I hope others are willing to as well.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other questions for, uh, Public Health Director? Well, thank you, Margot. I appreciate the sobering news. Absolutely. I see Commissioner Bangs has her hand up.
Sorry, I forgot to ask one. Um, so if, say, somebody who is vaccinated has contracted COVID, are they just as prevalent to pass the disease on to another person? What is, what is our current guideline for a vaccinated person who gets COVID?
Right. So that's a great question. Yes, a vaccinated person who gets COVID can transmit it just in the same manner that someone who is not vaccinated. What that, the relationship between viral load and transmissibility, we don't have that information yet. I'm, I'm sure there are papers right now or have been published on it, but there's a lot of papers on transmissibility and certainly I'm not able to read all of them. But I do know that to be true. Um, and also, but the guidance in terms of testing positive, whether, um, if you test positive, you have to isolate. There is no change to that guidance, whether or not you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. There's still isolation for those who test positive and quarantine for those who are, uh, contacts to someone who's been vaccinated unless, or someone who tests positive. If someone like myself who's fully vaccinated is exposed to someone who is confirmed positive of COVID, I no longer have to quarantine. I don't have to quarantine. And that was one of the wonderful benefits and game changers for so many people, particularly those who were able to go to work, is getting vaccinated. So that guidance has not changed. If you are fully vaccinated and you are identified as a contact to a positive case, you do not have to do the 14-day quarantine.
Sorry, just to follow up, do, does that person though, even though they're not following the quarantine, still encouraged to test at day five and between day five and day seven?
If they develop symptoms.
Okay. So it's only in regards to symptoms then if they are vaccinated?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Lots of, lots of crazy information out there.
I, I, I just, I guess, would want to offer this, that, and that, even though we're seeing more cases right now because more people are getting tested and we have our higher transmissibility of the Delta variant. What's not different than two months ago, three months ago, four months ago, is that, there are more cases in the community than have been identified. And that gets back to that, that idea that we don't know what people have. And it could not even be COVID at all, right? But they could be still transmitting something, which is why we wash our hands every single day. It's why we still stay home when we're sick. If COVID wasn't even a part of this conversation. And so, um, while it's alarming and concerning, it's also giving us a sense of what's really going on in our community and that can be very useful information.
Yes, thank you very much, Margot. Appreciate the update recommendations. And certainly I know public health will be monitoring the situation going forward. And, uh, we might need to review exactly what we do with regards to public meetings as well. Uh, I know that lots of policies are being reviewed right now. I know the hospital is, is looking at these protocols, um, going forward as well. So appreciate the update. Thank you, Margot.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. Next, we will have the fiscal year 2021 fourth quarter financials. Uh, and it's going to be funded by our budget and finance manager, Jennifer Carlson. Hi, Jennifer.
Hello. I am just waiting for Teresa to share my screen here. Oh.
Yeah, yep.
Teresa, I can actually present now. I'm, I had some technical difficulties earlier, but now I'm on my computer. So if you want to let me share.
Sure, just a moment.
Okay. Okay. Do you see my screen?
Yes.
All right. Let me just get things situated here. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for having me. Um, like you said, this is the fourth quarter financials for the 21, 20, or 2021 fiscal year. Um, and as a reminder, I prepare this at the, the end of the quarter. So this was about a month ago when things are still trickling in and, um, so just bear with me. Oops. Okay. So just a general overlook on everything. We've got the general fund. We have received 101 of the budgeted revenues. In addition to this, we've expended 84% of budgeted expenditures. Of that 84%, or I should say the 16% that was not expended, um, that's equal to about $5 million. 2.6 of that is contingency that we don't spend, that's budgeted in there to not be spent. So just having that as a side note, I'm moving on to the general roads and road district. We've received 68% of the budgeted revenues. In my note on that, um, I'll touch on this a little more later too, but we had, uh, somewhat of a budgeting error where we double budgeted $5.9 million in revenue in the road, um, fund. So that's why that appears to be low. So we had in there budgeting for an additional $5.9 million that we really don't anticipate getting. So that throws that percentage off just a tad there. Um, and then the 68% of expenditures, of the budgeted expenditures. And of this, um, there was $2 million budgeted for a land purchase and 1.6 million of contractual services budgeted as well. That did not end up being spent. Um, down on public health, we've received 77% of budgeted revenues. And this is a lot of, uh, at the end of the year, we had some budget adjustments for COVID funding that came in where we have not yet received those funds. So we did make the budget adjustment in the 2021 fiscal year. And for the expenditures, that goes along with the same thing. Um, we made the budget adjustments, but we didn't get the expenditures completed as of yet. So that's that. Um, here we've got the, all the funds, the revenue collected. If you look at the 2021 fiscal year, you can see that we're short about $10 million of budgeted revenues. Of that 10 million, um, 2.9 of that is COVID funding. Like I just said, those budget adjustments that came in late that we have yet to receive, along with the FEMA that we had budgeted, done a budget adjustment for. 2 million was state support that we budgeted under capital projects that we actually received in the prior fiscal year. So we budgeted this year, but we received it in the prior year. And then again, that $5.9 million that was kind of double booked in there, that's throwing it off just a little bit. Um, and then another note with that is revenues for the 2021 fiscal year. We've received those revenues still through the month of July. So things are continuing to trickle in and increase and getting closer to that 67 million. Okay. Here's the general fund revenues collected. You can see, um, 101%, uh, $22.5 million was collected in the general fund. If you look at that compared to last year, you might be surprised. Um, last year we had received 23 million. And again, that is, I think, a lot of that, if I, I went in the other day and we're up at 23 million and that's from those revenues that are trickling in throughout this prior month after I prepared this slide. So, um, we do, we, we will end up having more than the 23 million received on, in the general fund. Oops. And here's a slide that we always have, um, the major sources of revenue. You can see property taxes and timber, sales are approximately 60% of all the general fund revenue. So that's a major source of revenue. And a side note to that is the property taxes, the due date is November 15th. So we get the bulk of those property tax monies in late October, early November. Um, and then the timber sales, we don't get that first distribution of that until I believe it's late August. Um, so that's where our beginning fund balances really hold, carry over and hold our general fund and are able to pay the expenditures until we start receiving those revenues for the property taxes and the timber sales. Um, I did remove a slide after that one because it was just really wordy and it just gave all the dollar figures for the slide prior. So I'm going to move on to the general fund expenditures. Um, you can see that there's a couple on here that, um, if you look at the Board of Commissioner budget, that's way down here at this 50%, um, that's due to the budgeted, uh, health insurance that was not spent, spent. So that lowered that way down. Um, if we scroll along here, we have dues and assessments that was only 73% expended. We had budgeted 167,000 for public roads drainage and improvements and, um, there was only 22,000 spent on that. Um, and then the next one over, we've got medical examiner, which is only at 75% as well. And that was our personnel expenses were budgeted higher than, um, they came in. And that was our personnel expenses were budgeted higher than they came in. And for jail nurse, again, 75%, and that was for medical, dental labs, pharmacy expenses. They were about $75,000 less than what we anticipated they would cost. And then we've got our general fund payroll costs. It was a total of approximately $18 million for the 2021 fiscal year in expenses altogether. This is approximately 8% more than the prior year, which was pretty consistent throughout this year. And that's just for the standard increased FTEs, COLA increases, step increases, health insurance and whatnot. So that's to be expected. As for the public health expenditures, you'll notice that there's some that are very low. For example, the immunization action plan that fund. And that's for a couple of reasons. First of all, normally, this, this org unit is a really small budgeted org unit there. It was originally a $17,000 budget, but we did have a budget adjustment for grant funding that increased it by $209,000. So why a substantial amount? That budget adjustment was done in June. So again, with the same thing I touched on earlier, that's due to, you know, not spending those grant monies yet. So that will be a carryover. I'm, a couple of these, like the babies first and the harm reduction. So babies first here, harm reduction here, those have a large contingency that was budgeted and unapportioned projects. So that was money that should have been moved into the contingency that we did not plan on spending. So that's just throwing that, that number down there. If you look at the household hazardous waste, that's about just under 60%. We did have $110,000 internal service loan that we decided not to have them pay back to special projects due to where they were sitting, looking at next year's budget. We decided that we would forgive it for this year and take, reevaluate it next year and see where they're at. But we thought it'd be best if they didn't pay that back. And then emergency preparedness is way down here below 40%. And again, that is for some grant funding that was received and added to the budget late in June. So, and that was over a million dollars there that we have not spent yet. So the other thing is, you know, we've focused with all of the pandemic and whatnot. The, the focus has gone away from some of our normal operations and been focused on the pandemic. So that has thrown our numbers off a bit this year as well. For the general roads, this was 68% expended overall, which that was 10.9 million of a $16 million budgeted was spent. Like I said earlier, 2 million of that was for the capital outlay for land purchase and 1.6 million was contractual services associated with that as well. So that came in low. Then we've got all of our other funds and orgs. I will note that many of these funds have contingencies per GFOA best practices. And this is just to maintain adequate, was adequate reserves. So if future years, if there's low revenues, they don't need to make budget cuts and whatnot. So that is part of the GFOA best practices. And an example of that would be, let's see, we've got clerk records, which has a total budget of 13,000. They expended 9,000. And 4,000 of that $13,000 budget is a contingency. So it shows that they've only expended under 75% of their budget. However, that other 25% or so is their contingency that was not anticipated to be spent. And that's the same for many of these orgs all across here. Let's see. If I have any other notes on that.
Could, could I hold you up there for a moment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm looking for how to wrap my arms around this discussion because I understand contingencies. I've just come from AOC's Budget and Finance Committee. We had a big discussion on whether contingency money should count as money we really had. So if you say 25% of that budget is really in contingency, I think I'd rather see, sorry, I've got a cough drop in my mouth, I think I'd rather see a chart that included that, but in some other fashion, because I think that's a more accurate representation of how you're managing the accounting of it.
Yeah, I could see, I, I could look at adding that on top of here in a different color or something that would really show the contingency on top to show where it really lays out. Would that be helpful?
Thank you. It's really a complex, and I want to say it's a challenging concept to look at what do we have and, and why is it important to have cap reserves? Just so we complete discussion. Thank you.
And that is something I'm working on developing more for our future presentations, that hopefully I can get that presented to you in a better way. Thank you. Okay, so that's all I have for the fourth quarter, the whole year financials for 2021. I do have an additional slide here for COVID expenses and the CARES reimbursement that we've gotten as a county. Do note that this does not include CARES funding that, or COVID funding that's gone to public health. This is just for our county here. So from what we've tracked, we've had total COVID-related expenses of 2.2 million. This is broken out here by PPE, custodial time, remote work, 74,000. COVID signage supplies, volunteer expenses, 68,000. Building improvements such as the Plexiglas barriers and whatnot, just under 50,000 for meetings, travel, lodging, that's another 37,000. And then the payroll associated expenses, that's a major one, at 1.1 million dollars. And that's for, let's see, we've got for people that were unable to work due to being quarantined or working from home or, and in addition, working on COVID-related tasks. So, and then this last one here is that $852,000, and that's business support that was passed through funds that we passed on through to feeder. But of that 2.2 million, we were reimbursed 2.1 million until we ran out of funding. So that's where we sat on that. That is all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Commissioner Webb.
Thank you. I think it would be very useful to be able to have a year-end budget report that includes, that is, that we wait long enough to make that report until all of these loose ends have been wrapped up. I, I found this, some of this information are very difficult to explain to Joe Citizen. I too, I, I know this is something that Commissioner Thompson and I feel strongly about, which is the amount of money that we allocate to contingencies, which I think is excessive for a public agency. But, but there's, there's just so much missing information in this that I don't think it's a very, that it's, I, I don't think it's enough for, for a year-end look at, at how our money was spent last year. It was such an unusual year that, and I have a lot of questions about underspending in departments that, that I didn't expect. Road funding, for instance, usually those folks are right on target. And I'd like to be able to know what some of the issues were that precluded full expenditures being made. So I just wonder if that's something we could consider in, in the future. But this year, sometime, sometime in the, in the near future, that would help us explain how we spend our money to our constituents. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for our Budget and Finance Manager? Commissioner Thompson?
Just one. I saw that we were in, pretty low in terms of what I thought were healthcare expenses at the, at the jail. Did, I think that was on page 10 of my packet. I don't know if we have any information. I don't know if we have fewer inmates' medical problems or if I'm misreading that one.
And that was for the jail nurse org that you're talking about?
No, on, on my, sorry, I don't know if it, if it, how it correlates with yours. After general fund sources of revenue, general fund expenditures by org unit. When I was looking at, no, 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 I should have, I should have flagged it. It was basically healthcare in the prison. And so maybe I was just misreading the, the, maybe it was just the jail nurse and the medical examiner that I saw. But I thought I noticed reduced medical expenditures. So let me hold my question and, and collect it later.
And for that jail nurse, I did make note that that was about $75,000. It was over budgeted by $75,000 for medical, dental labs, pharmacy expenses. And I don't, and I'm not sure why that was, but that was where they did not have the spending that they anticipated.
Okay, that's why I thought it related to the health of the inmates. So that was my.
Looks like Monica and Dawn have something to comment there.
Well, Chair Quayle members of the board, I think part of that explanation also is that the population in the jail has been much lower during the pandemic because of the sheriff's efforts to maintain a population that allows COVID to be managed within the correctional facility. So when you have less, less inmates in the jail, we also have, have, have less medical costs. So I think that's part of the story, too.
Thank you, County Manager. Any additional questions for our Budget and Finance Manager? All right. Thank you very much, Jennifer. And we don't have any other items on our work session this evening. So we actually have a few minutes, 15 minutes or so, that we can take a break. And we will reconvene here at 6 o'clock for our regular meeting. So we'll see you shortly. we will reconvene here at 6 o'clock for our regular meeting. So we'll see you shortly.[190.14][190.14][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10][191.10]
You home, John, or are you in Walla Walla?
Define home.
That's what I was gonna say.
I'm in beautiful Gearhart, Oregon.
How are you? Okay.
It's constant run and balancing work, kids. There's summer, I don't want to miss out.
It looks like you had a great grand opening there in Walla Walla.
It was great. Very nice. It's so, it's funny because you know, the temperature and you know, the climate and the industries are different, but the feel is very similar. Same, you know, rural, good, down-to-earth people, you know, in both places. That's kind of why we like being here in Gearhart and why we like it out there is it's all about people.
Yeah, that's great.
Mark, I'm not sure I'm gonna make it through this meeting.
Are you not feeling well?
I have got the plague, yeah.
Oh, no.
I would appreciate if I just, if, if at some point I need to drop off, I will, I won't be on the floor, but I will be muted and hopefully nobody will have to look at me anymore. So.
Well, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry that you're not feeling well and totally understand if you have to go. Are you here or where are you? Where are you at?
I'm here. I'm here. I'm, I'm back from the land of grandchildren. And every time I get on and off an airplane, I often get sick.
Yeah.
Even with a mask on for seven hours, it didn't help. So this is, this is the penance that I have to pay for being with my precious, precious little souls. So as I say, if I just drop off, then I, I will just drop off.
Okay, totally understand. Yeah, you have to take care of yourself.
Okay, thank you. It's nice to see you all.
Good to see you. I'm glad you're back and I'm glad you had a great trip.
I did. It's the, it's the first time I've ever been near Washington DC and never gone into the district.
Not a business to do.
Well, and you know, which is a testament, because that's a city I love more than almost any city in the world. But, but it was just too compelling being with my grandson.
Yeah, I'm glad you got to see your family. That's, that's great. I see we've got six of one and everyone back. So let's go ahead and start the regular meeting. Well, the Board of Commissioners, as the governing body of Clatsop County, all county service districts for this body so is now meeting in regular session. Teresa, can we have the roll call?
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Toyoka?
Present.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Banks?
Here.
Chair Quila?
Here. We've had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Commissioner Thompson moves to approve the agenda.
Well, second.
Movement seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify with an I.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the next item is business from the public. So this is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except for public hearings or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak this evening?
Yes, I have Reba Owen.
Yeah, I see Reba. Reba, you've registered to speak. Please wait and give your name and address for the record before you start and you'll have two minutes to speak. So I'll turn it over to you, Reba.
Reba Owen, 79124 Tide Avenue, Cove Beach. On July 23rd, there was another illegal beach fire in the Driftwood in front of my cabin. The Cannon Beach Fire Department came. Luckily, my cabin and the fire were near the Richmond Access. This is the access with stairs that the State Parks Department has threatened to cut up and remove. At your last meeting, manager Boone said there would be a site visit in late July. Well, we are now in late July. No one has seen anyone come down there. I was there yesterday and nothing's been done. The athletically adept public continues to try to get down Columbia Access by scaling down the 10-foot drop-off. I would like to have an update on the county, what the county plans to do and when. Also, I would like to thank Commissioner Thompson for responding to me after our last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Reba. Do we have any others, members of the public that have signed up to speak?
No, we do not.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. We've had an opportunity to review the consent calendar. Does anyone have any questions on the consent calendar? If not, maybe we could have a motion to approve the consent counter.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thompson moves to adopt the consent calendar.
Seconded.
Movement seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify with an I.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Commissioner Liaison reports. We'll start with Commissioner Thompson.
Mr. Chair, add yield to Commissioner Webb since she's not feeling well.
That's it. I appreciate that gesture, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Webb?
Um, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I, I, since I've been away, I really don't have much activity to report except that the processes in NOAA for continuing to, to put together a wonderful plan for affordable housing in Warrington have reached a little bit of a stumble. The, the city of Warrington is giving us a little bit of trouble in terms of the road improvements that they want us to make. And that's something that perhaps I, I, our chair and I can talk about. And, and you will hear from me, Mark, about our, our seafood initiative as soon as I can talk about it. Okay?
Sounds great and happy to talk. Commissioner Webb?
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. You know, I just have to say, it's my honor and privilege to serve as the District Five Commissioner. And I was never more aware of that than when I had the bittersweet joy of attending Sam Whistler, Officer Sam Whistler's memorial service. That community came to get, even the seagulls were perched and talking to commemorate the situation, to celebrate the incredible life of that extraordinary young man and to just grieve his passing together. There's, as Commissioner Toyoka said, this is, this is small town. This is really the heart that we come together to love and grieve together. So what a rare privilege to be with all of the people who were there and just the most heartfelt condolences to all of the people that he touched, who were without number. So, so that piece. And, and thank you, Reba Owen, for caring so much about your community. Today was the day. The county manager will give a brief update, but we are going to have a work session later. Today was the day, Reba. So just to reassure you in that. I'm speaking tomorrow with Curry County Commissioner Court Boyce, who's the chair of that Board of Commissioners, and Gina Nichol about developing this coastal housing collaborative that would be the commissioners, the NGO community, the faith community and all of that. I don't know what we can do, but Senator Johnson says, go for it. See if we can do good because she doesn't, she doesn't want to see us left out of the mix. So that's really heartening. That's, that's enough. Three is enough. I try and hold myself to three. That's, that's enough. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
I'm raving about the fair today and this evening. An unconfirmed number of 1,500 visitors yesterday. I was able to overhear that in passing, which is amazing. So many smiles from the kids. It's so, it's so fun to see these kids in person this year and celebrating their projects that they've worked really hard over for the last six months to a year. The COVID response at the fairgrounds is amazing. There are wash stations handily located pretty much everywhere. There is sanitizer on each amusement, I guess is what you would call them, down where the children are riding the rides and some adults too. I was there today. But the responses, I mean, automatic wash stations, the bathrooms are all automated now. They've done just a really amazing job in response to our pandemic and trying to make, make sure that our, our visitors are safe and healthy. But other than that, the fair, it's very exciting. We have Josh Turner Friday night. Thank you, Lums Toyota for that sponsorship. But then also we have one of the, one of the lead singers from Journey. I think he's the second lead singer on Saturday, but tickets are still available for everyone to purchase. And then to segue over, I've actually had a lot of conversations this week regarding Highway 30. The number of accidents that we have had and the number of responses that we have had in this summer has been pretty, pretty high. And it's, it's, there's a few constituents that are concerned about capacity of our volunteer department, especially since that department has recently consolidated with, oh, I think it's the Burnside Department. All of our, our local fire departments have recently consolidated here in this area. And so there's some capacity concerns. There's also tourist traffic concerns. And folks are going 70 down Highway 30. They're coming into Napa going 70 on Highway 30. And fortunately, we've had a state trooper that has been stationed slowing people down, but still they, they hit that rise and they're, they're hauling and it's, and it's scary. And so there's that. And then also, you know, just the fire danger concerns. We've been very fortunate throughout the state of Oregon that most of our lightning storms recently have come with a considerable amount of moisture. And so we are, we are fortunate in that. But yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Banks, for that report. Commissioner Toyoka?
Well, good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things. One is, you know, we've touched on the fair, but what I'd really like to address is the, our youth, the youth in Clatsop County. Whether it's summer baseball, the Clatsop County Fair, just to see the youth turnout. And we talked about all the effects of the pandemic and COVID, but I think the worst one I personally witnessed is our children, our youth, that the mental issues, the, you know, the, what it did to them in their, in their developmental phase. To see them back out playing baseball, playing sports, going to the fair, participating, being kids and enjoying life, that is the best thing in life right there. Just, that's been the blessing so far this summer is to see them being kids again. So that's been great. Another thing I wanted to bring up was, if anybody knows, our own chief workman, the Warrington Police Chief, he is the president of the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police. So in our county, in our, in the city of Warrington, we have the president of the Association of Chiefs of Police. They're hosting an annual meeting this week. And so the chief workman has been busy. He's coordinating that meeting of the association. But I just wanted to give a recognition to the, our local chief for being the president of that association and truly what it means to our county and our local, local people here. So all, all kudos to Chief Workman. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Toyoka for mentioning that. And congratulations to Chief Workman. I was really pleased to hear that and privileged to work with him in, in the city of Warrington. And that's a great honor and certainly well deserved. The only thing I would add is that I attended the Cedar meeting last Thursday. We talked about a few things. But one thing in particular was all of the projects that have been done for the Bonneville Power Association over the years. We had a really good report kind of outlining all of those that have been completed and those that are, continue to be in the works. And I thought it would be a good presentation and that was suggested to me by a few of the folks on the Cedar Board that, that maybe this body would like to hear what Cedars or what, excuse me, what Crest, did I say Cedar or Crest? I don't even know what I, did I say Cedar? I meant Crest this whole time. So anyway. The Crest meeting, I would love to have a presentation from them at a future work session just to kind of give an update on all of, all of the projects that they've been doing. It really is a substantial amount. And then to Commissioner Webb's point, I did talk with the county manager about seafood industry work session or at least a presentation about the fishing industry, seafood industry in general. Like you could take it, take things for granted when we live here and we don't always know all of the activity going on around us. And I think it would be a good refresher for all of us to hear from some in the industry. So Commissioner Webb, I'll get with you. We can kind of put an invite list of folks we'd like to have present to us. And Commissioner Thompson, you had a question?
I did, sir. I would love to hear about Crest, but we've also got the Arch Cape Forest, which just has achieved a breakthrough in its funding. And Katie Volkey's organization, the North Coast Land Conservancy, has also achieved its funding. Maybe we could have a green session and talk about, you know what I mean? There's a lot of really fine work going on and it would be lovely to have them all together, I think.
Yeah. Well, I loaded up Don yesterday with a few of them. I also mentioned one about the working waterfronts having Hayek merit time and Bergerson Construction. Also talk about all of the activity along our waterway. You know, we are, we are the gateway to the Columbia River and, and all of the commerce that takes place. And I think it would be nice to hear from them as well. So a lot of presentations that we can have and I do think that they're all worthy. So, so thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And I will turn it over to our county manager.
Thank you, Chair Quila, members of the board. I'll just give a quick update on the site visit that took place today between Oregon State Parks, Public Works and Cannon Beach Fire. I, I did not attend, so I'm gonna have to defer these specifics to Mr. McLean when he comes and gives an update at your next work session. We'll carve out some time for that. But they did go down. There's been collaboration between all the different jurisdictions. And really, one of the priority areas that they walked away from today is a strategy to improve access for the emergency vehicles. And the two sites that they were really focused on for that was the Clatsop Lane and the Leach Lane sites. And they have a strategy to go in both with Cannon Beach Fire and with our Public Works Department to improve those. Chief Recman feels strongly, obviously, that he needs to have access to the beach from those sites. And so we're gonna work with them and with the state parks to make sure that that happens. There's some other sites that are a little bit more challenging and I'd like to defer those conversations until Mr. McLean can be here to really go through some of the other challenges. But, but for the meantime, these two access points are gonna be improved so that we can make sure that, that Chief Recman and his crew can get down to the beach. So that's my update. But as I said, we will be preparing an agenda item for a work session to talk about that further. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, county manager. Appreciate the update. We'll move on to the items on our business agenda at this time. Item six is the correction to resolution and order adopting 2122 county budget. That's on page 83 of our agenda. And is there a staff report?
Hi, Commissioners. I'm gonna present this on behalf of General Jennifer Carlson. So as you can tell in the agenda item that she provided with the, the redlined version, there was the exemption from the limitation category that's used for taxes to pay principal and interest payments on exempt bonded indebtedness was put into the wrong category. It was put in, in, in the category as far as being subject to the general limitation, which it's not. It's excluded from that limitation. And so it's been corrected and put in the, in the right column. And so that is all that this, this agenda item is for, is to make that correction. And then we will submit this to the Assessment and Tax Division.
Thank you, Monica. Obviously, no fiscal impact. This is just a clerical error being corrected.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve the resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2021, 22 by organizational unit imposing taxes, categorizing taxes, levying for bonded debt and making appropriations for Clatsop County.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded that the board approve the resolution adopting the budget for 2122 by organizational unit imposing taxes, categorizing taxes, levying for bonded debt and making appropriations for Clatsop County. All those in favor signify with an I.
Aye.
I?
Aye.
As opposed? And I will note, I think Commissioner Webb did drop off. I don't believe she's available. So we, but we did have four ayes there. Next item is the appointment of board members to WikiUp Water District. That's on page 86. And is there a staff report? County Council?
Chair and Commissioners, my name is Joanna Lyons-Antley, County Council. Tonight, you are going to decide whether to appoint two recommended district board members to the WikiUp Water Control, sorry, Water District. The Water District, represented by attorney Eileen Akins, contacted your board to let them know, to let you know that they in fact did not have a quorum and they're seeking appointment for two positions. One is a Josh Gifford and the second is a Doug Stevens. Apparently, there was also a clerical mistake by these two gentlemen and they did not accept their write-in campaigns in time. And so they are asking for you, according to ORS 198320, to appoint them to the vacant positions of the special district. There's any questions? I will note that I believe District Manager Michelle Bolton is on the line.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for County Council or District Manager? If not, can we have a motion?
Commissioner Banks' district, right?
Yes, ma'am. I move that we appoint Josh Gifford and Doug Stevens to the WikiUp Water District Board pursuant to ORS 198.320, authorizing the Board of Commissioners to fill vacant positions of a special district.
Second.
Moved and seconded to appoint Josh Gifford and Doug Stevens to the WikiUp Water District Board pursuant to ORS 198.320, authorizing the Board of Commissioners to fill vacant positions of a special district. All those in favor signify with an I.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have four ayes. Motion carries. We'll move on to the good of the order. Do we have anything for the good of the order this evening? Well, not seeing any. So we'll go ahead and close our meeting and adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a great rest of your evening and good week. Take care. Thanks for joining.